We'll get started with a short invocation here. Lord, you know all the answers. You already know the result of this meeting tonight. We ask that you please shine your light on us. Help us to realize that all problems have solutions and setbacks offer us the opportunity for improvement. Let us treat each other with respect. Help promote dignity. Help promote the dignity that we deserve. Guide us in the decisions that we make for the benefit of our citizens, our staff, our commerce, and our beautiful city, Erlanger, Kentucky. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Now call the Order of the December 2016 Regular Meeting of City Council. Let's please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Hoffman, will you please take roll call?
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
We have a quorum. You received a copy of the minutes of the November 1st, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we accept as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle. Second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. You've received a copy of the agenda of the December 6th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or changes to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion that we accept as presented. Motion by Mr. Meyer. Second by Mrs. Kyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to our special presentations. Our first presentation this evening is our business spotlight, Ally's Walkabout. I'll introduce Ally Clegg, if you want to come up and take the podium.
Hello, thank you guys for having us tonight. I'm gonna tell you basically about how Ally's Walkabout got started. When I was nine years old, I asked this guy for some spending money. And he told me that he wouldn't give me any, but he would teach me how to earn it. And so, basically, we talked about what are smart ways to serve other people and what they would pay for and those kinds of things. And so, we went around with different ideas and we came to my two favorite things, which was obviously making money and getting to spend time with other animals. So, I went and walked around the streets around my house in Villa Hills and we kind of just handed out brochures, me and my little brother. And we got our first customer that day and we were gonna go walk their dog. So, I went and walked Cody. And that was probably the first year of my business was walking just one or two dogs. And then, it kind of kept growing and eventually by year three, we were watching dogs in our home from just around the neighborhood and from my church. And that was maybe two to three dogs a week. And that's when we really started thinking like we should probably get serious about this. And that's when we built our first website, which wasn't even, you know, we didn't even have our name within like the first like five words of the sentence URL. So, it was not very serious at that point, but we were still getting people to reach out to us from Google and different things like that. And they were giving us calls, finding us everywhere. So, we decided to build allyswalkabout.com. And we started getting flooded with reservations in our homes still. And, I mean, it was just amazing. Like by year four, we were having around five dogs to 10 dogs a week. We started daycare in our homes still and eventually that kept growing. We doubled in business every year, still in our home. And by our last summer in our house, we had 40 dogs by the weekends. So, we were, obviously, my mom was very happy and excited to get it out of the house. So, we were looking for buildings everywhere and it seemed like the longest search, like it just was endless. And we finally found our building in Erlanger, which was awesome. We found it the day after, went up for sale. It's right on Crescent Springs Road. It's the best location we could have asked for, only a mile away from our house. Our business has almost doubled, our daycare keeps growing. We're about to open a second location, hopefully, very soon. And I mean, it's just way more than we could ever ask for. Our vision is 25 by 25, so 25 locations by 2025. And hopefully, that will happen. So, I think my dad's gonna talk about more details and such.
Thank you, Ally. You did great. We're an off-leash care facility, so it's a little different than a lot of care facilities where the dogs spend 70% of their day outside of the kennel. So, they go home good and tired, but they're not traumatized and exhausted. We do have nap time, middle of the day, noon to 2:00. And so, we actually turn out the lights, turn up the classical music, and try to get them to actually sleep, which most of them do. But we employ, did we do that count, honey? I think it's 18, oh, 25? We employ 25 people. Most part-time, we probably have five full-time employees, six full-time employees. But we have grooming, training, boarding, daycare, photography, soon-to-come massage therapy for dogs. But thank you for having us. It's really great that you take the time to highlight. Yes, sir?
I remember reading that story when we first started.
I do too.
And then I remember reading about they had it in their house and how they kept getting the dogs, said this poor girl's got a business going, what's gonna happen? I am so happy for you because I'll tell you what, I've stayed on top of that. And I was just recently coming up Crescent Springs Road and that's where it's at now. So, congratulations, you've done a great job there.
That's awesome. You should be very proud.
Yes.
Very proud.
We are, we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got Operation Honor. Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Ally, that's incredible. I've had entrepreneurial blood in me since I was yea high. And to hear that story and really what impressed me the most is how you've grown it and how you've identified other opportunities, that you're employing people, and that you have a goal. I mean, 25 by 25, that's, Shark Tank's one of my favorite stories. So, that's, that's very commendable. So, my name is Joe Montgomery and I'm going to be extremely brief on what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is this banner right here. This is called an Honor Banner. Operation Honor's a 501(c)(3) veterans-based charity. We are based in Owen County, Kentucky. My wife, myself, and my son moved to Erlanger back in '08. We both started small businesses. We've been residents and small business. Well, I own my business. My wife runs a small chamber music series out of the house as an independent contractor. So, we basically run two businesses out of our house. I started Operation Honor about eight years ago, right about when I came to Erlanger, and it was called Tailgating for Troops. Maybe some of you saw my old red Ford pickup truck running around with the big flag on it, said Tailgating for Troops on it. Big diesel, it was loud, it was noisy, but it got attention. That was eight years ago to honor my dad, all eight of my uncles who served. My oldest uncle Jim was infantry, Army, World War II. My youngest uncle Bobby was Marines in Vietnam in the 19, which was referred to as the Walking Dead, where about 7% of them came back. He was one of those 7%. So, I always, I've got a very strong military history in my family. I was lucky enough in business and in life to be blessed to spend some time, resources, and money to try to start a hobby. And it started as Tailgating for Troops, and it was just exactly that. And blessed with a wife who, when I said, hey, honey, I wanna wrap the truck for 800 bucks, oh, okay, you know, or I wanna do this, or I wanna get a tent. So, as we grew, we grew into additional programs and it became evident that we should probably become a 501(c)(3) because we stumbled onto a few programs that have pretty much launched us into what's going to be more than likely a national charity within the next 12 months. And so, we rebranded as Operation Honor. The Honor Banner is just one of our programs. It is a program that is a community enhancement program. It is also a recognition program. So, it was designed, these are banners that would obviously hang on the poles throughout Erlanger. We started in Owentown, Kentucky, which is very tiny. Within five weeks of just some Facebook and some social media and a news article, we had 56 banners sponsored. So, it is also a fundraiser both for us and for, if you so choose, as a group, a local veterans-based or first responder or law enforcement organization. We can go through those details later if you decide you wanna move forward. But it's very much a turnkey program. Our website is up and running. We will have it developed to where someone can go in and sponsor a banner directly on our website. You can do that now, but it'll be a little bit more specific. This is Independence. Independence is doing it. I've got about, since we met a few weeks ago, we have over 10 communities already jumping on. We just worked out a deal, we're gonna do a huge exhibit with the Freedom Center downtown, the Underground Railroad, and do a large African-American veteran exhibit on meeting with the City of Cincinnati next week, actually, to maybe do this on the streetcar line was our idea with that. So, I won't go into too much about the, you guys can hand me back or ask more questions or follow up. But does anyone have any questions? I mean, I didn't go into great detail, but what we wanna do is bring this to Erlanger and have these hanging all throughout Erlanger for residents to, you know, honor and recognize. And it really does look good when they're all hanging. We had 56 of them hanging on the courthouse down in Owentown for Sweet Owen Day, and it was impressive. Lot of tears, lot of emotion, lot of memories of some of those that have passed. So, that's pretty much it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you sponsor a banner, are you allowed to submit a picture?
That's correct. So, this entire banner will be customized. So, let's just say it says Erlanger Salutes. Now, we did Hometown Heroes, a lot of that. I like the salutes, or Erlanger recognizes, or Erlanger appreciates, or whatever it might be. So then, yes, so this is Bernard Moon. He is one of the Moon Brothers that started the American Legion in Independence. He was in World War II. He's one of the brothers. This was the first banner we made for Independence. It's just an example. So, it would say Erlanger, whatever. It would have their name, it would have whomever's pictures, it's a two-sided. And then, it would put their branch, or fire department, or, you know, sheriff's office or whatever, and then you can customize whatever message. So, all this is dependent upon the sponsor. Each sponsor will have a little bit different.
Why? Because my dad, he's not from Erlanger, but he fought in World War II. In fact, I was born while he was shipped overseas. Came back, I didn't know who he was. And that's awesome. I like that idea.
It's pretty, either you love it or you don't kinda thing. If I could see that far, I could remember the gentleman there that I was speaking to, but I can't see that far. But I had mentioned to him that this is for Erlanger residents in the community. So, your father's or grandfather served in World War II, or your uncle was a fireman in San Francisco, or whatever, that you want to honor him in our community. It's just ties to the community. You don't actually have to live here, or, you know, we've had veterans and people that have passed. We have still, we've got some with active duty, standing in Afghanistan with their, you know, their dogs sitting right in front of them. It's just, each one just seems to be more powerful and more powerful as we get them in and the story behind it, so.
I like the idea.
And there's a lot of cool things you do with. So, it's extreme, I guess, it's extremely turnkey. You guys don't have to open up the checkbook, which is always a good thing. The community sponsors it. It's just turnkey. They go to our website. What would happen normally, we do like a three-year deal where they would go up somewhere before Memorial Day, they stay up to pass Veterans Day, or you can do it however you want. If you wanna put them up on the 4th and take them down Labor Day, or do two years, and then give them to the families. It's extremely customizable, turnkey. They go on our website. Whenever we decide we'd wanna start it, we provide everything for you. So, we print the banners, have them, and then we provide the pole brackets and the strapping and all thing. And I will say, I guess, the only responsibility of the city is one, to get permission to hang them on the poles if it's Duke or whoever owns them. Two is to have someone hang and bring them down, so.
And what, how much is it per banner to sponsor?
The banner to sponsor to the city is $129, and that's everything, delivered to your door. Now, our recommended retail that we suggest for the community for a three-year program is only $149. It's 50 bucks a year. It's, I mean, if you've ever printed a two-foot by three-foot full-color two-side vinyl thing that's sewn, you'll know how expensive that is, plus the bracket. But, so Operation Honor does make a few dollars. And then, name, you know, small veterans charity, or the VFW, or, you know, again, I don't like to get into that because that's up to the city. If you want to, you can, or you can discharge for $129. If you wanna say it's $139 and we give $10 a banner to somebody. If you wanna say it's $199 and you give $60 to someone here in the community, you can really do whatever you want. But it's for what it is and the exposure it gets and the enhancement it brings to the community, you'll have people lining up to sponsor it. And once one person sponsors it and sees Uncle Bob up there, then they'll have to put the neighbor and the brother and the sister and the grandfather. And it's, people love it. It's not a hard sell.
Joe, I think what we'll probably do, if I can get a nod from Council, is talk about it more at the Council Committee Meeting in two weeks. We can discuss it a little bit more and as far as our involvement. Oh, January's Council Committee? Yeah, that probably would make more sense. Wait till the January Council Committee Meeting, yeah. We'll discuss it more then and just kinda make sure that we're all on track and see how we wanna handle it.
I will, I will forward you then kind of a sample agreement. I hate to call it a contract.
Be great.
It's a pretty, we provide these at such-and-such. We do all the, you know, the web work you guys, you know, handle, just the hanging and the, and I'll have, y'all have that to you, and you guys can moustache that too legally as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you.
You.
And y'all have Merry Christmas.
You too.
All right, next up then, we've got the Community Kindness Presentation. Amy Durham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I had this idea. And it really was based on, you know, the beginning of the season where my kids are about ready to ask Santa for a whole lot of things. And I think we already have enough whole lot of things around here. And also, because, you know, we've been very blessed and my husband and I have, you know, we're fortunate to have had the opportunities for higher education and to, you know, have careers, successful careers and everything, that my kids are just darn spoiled. And it's not intentional. But I really wanted them to be able to participate in something that would show them they can give back to their community. I'm born and raised Elsmere child. I went to Dorothy Howell for part of grade school, and then I switched to St. Henry. And I graduated from St. Henry. And I guess really, I wanted to get my kids' attention and then, and it was initially something very small that has seemed to flourish and has gotten a lot of attention, very positive attention. And so, that's why I'm here this evening. I tried to explain to my kids. I'm now a reading interventionist at Dorothy Howell Elementary. So, I was a gator, and then 30 years later, I'm a gator. And that was also kind of one of the things I've been blessed with. I wasn't necessarily looking for a job, but a couple of people thought of me and reached out to me. And now, I am, I have this whole new exciting, you know, reason to be so thankful. I love our students, I love our staff. I'm honored to work with them. We do have a lot of students who are in need. And that was one thing I wanted to express to my children, was that Christmas is not a happy time for every single family. There are children who don't really know what to expect. There are children while on Christmas break from school, don't know if they'll be fed regularly. There are children who want for things like a blanket and not a Playstation or, you know, some of the other things that other children that they are familiar with want for. Also, I wanted them to know that that's a very stressful time for a parent that is struggling to feed their children and pay their bills month by month, and then we have Christmas coming and, you know, they don't know where any extra money is gonna come from for that. My daughter spent an entire day in her room going through all of her things. She's seven, came down with a huge box and said, I still love all of these things, but if I were only to get one gift on Christmas, I just know that some of these other kids are gonna appreciate this more than I do. And I was like, woo! So, then I started reaching out to some friends via Facebook because I thought all of the charities that I know of and even our family resource centers in our schools, they give brand-new donated items. And I thought, I would've never made it through my children's toddler years if I didn't have friends and family and what our, at our house, we call family, the friends that we choose to make our family, passing along garbage bags of clothing and toys and all of that. And I thought, you know what? I wish there was something that I could do to get my kids a little more involved. We often go through and drop things off at Goodwill or St. Vincent de Paul. And I wanted them to do more than that. I wanted them to be able to see and help and have a lesson in empathy and kindness. The rule of our house and the rule of my life is if you can be anything, be kind. And I challenged them to do that too. A friend of mine that we met when we were 10 at St. Henry, her dad is Bill Howard. She reached out to me and said, my dad does the man-omission at his church, a free meal once a month and free groceries for people in the community. And I was like, oh. She said, I think nothing would make his Christmas better than to be able to make a lot of children happy at Christmas. Why don't you talk to him? And so, I spoke with him. And at this point, I was looking for a venue that I planned on just like paying a rental fee myself. And I was gonna collect things from friends. I got a lot of support, a lot of people saying, oh, yes, I have this, this, and this, and this, and this. And I spoke with Bill and I met them for one of their man-omission dinners at the end of one of their dinners for Thanksgiving. And we spoke a little more about the idea. And it started to grow legs, and then I started to get all these emails, like from, Dr. Burkhart sent me an email, and I was really like, oh, my gosh, like, did I do something wrong? Because before I, before we, it really started growing, I spoke with my principal, Michael Goodno, and I asked him, who do I need to go to? I spoke with our family resource, social workers, and I asked them, can we just, can we collect things to help with our, the Christmas health, the holiday assistance that we do? And she said, no, everything has to be new. They said, no, everything has to be new. Everything has to be confidential with the holiday assistance, which I understand. But I thought, how do I generate a list of people to serve? And luckily, because it's just a full-circle kind of moment, Emily reached out to me and I spoke with Bill. And, you know, we've been talking regularly since. I even asked permission of my principal to email just the employees at my school to tell them what we were doing because I don't want it to be perceived as anything other than I have a big heart, I have a big mouth, I have a big circle of friends and a great big network and a lot of people that wanted to get involved. So, my basement and my garage are full of items. Bill has been instrumental in helping me to get in front of you all tonight. And I, we are accepting donations of toys and clothing, books, and what I call the warm stuff, coats and hats, gloves, scarves, those things. I have employed my mom and all of her crocheting and knitting friends to make hats and earmuffs and things that we can let these families shop for. Another thing that I felt was really important was that I wanted everything to be given away. I didn't want the things that my children donated or anybody else donated to be sold in a thrift store or given away. And to set up a sort of free shopping opportunity for those families that don't have the extra cash at this time of year to go shopping. And so, we came up with a system based on our donations that will just be, we will have tickets, and that's the currency, pretty much. You don't have to pay for the tickets. But it will be set up like a store, and people will get a certain amount of tickets per child and their family. And then, they can, you know, have the opportunity to take some ownership of these gifts and not just depend on a donation or, but to really feel like they get to be part of this. Bill's church, Erlanger United Methodist, is going to head up the gathering of wrapping paper and those kind of supplies. And we spoke about when people are finished shopping, they can go home with those supplies so that they can also be the one to wrap and give these gifts. And the parents get to take some ownership over that as well, because I felt like it My students at Howell, they were definitely the initial inspiration. I love them so much. And they're such great kids. And I know that, you know, just doing something that could give back and something with no strings attached. And it's not necessarily affiliated with the district or anything. I just happen to be a teacher at the district and I happen to live here and everything. But, yeah, I really just wanted to make sure that I was teaching my own kids a lesson and it's gathered steam and it's giving a lot of people an opportunity to spread the kindness as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Amy. Go ahead, Bill.
Just make a couple comments on, make a couple comments. She didn't say it'll be, it'll be at Methodist Church, but it's from 11 to 3 that morning. So, that's where the gathering will be. That's the time, 11 to 3.
Oh, yes, it is. It's 11 to 3. And then, the man-omission will have their 100th meal, which is a huge deal, that same evening from 5 to 7:30 and their grocery giveaway.
Right, right.
People were confused, thinking it was all together. It is all together as in you can come and spend the entire day at Erlanger United Methodist and you can have fellowship with people and some shopping and some food and, but they are, they're two separate events that take place at the same, in the same fellowship hall. Yes, December 17.
And I believe, I believe the administration department here at the City Building is probably gonna be collecting hats, gloves, and blankets if people wanna drop those off here at the City Building that day between now and the 16th. We'll take them on over to Community Kindness for that giveaway on Saturday, so.
With Lifeline closing, which is closing on the 16th, I've already spoken with them a couple of times about their closing. I plan on speaking with them again, like inventory-wise, and to see if there's anything that they might be willing to donate to the community, because these are their families too. We've already spoken about it a little bit, the office manager and I. So, I do, I plan on speaking with them as well, just to see if there is anything that, there're gonna be a lot of resources that they're gonna be dividing up after the first of the year. So, I figured, hey, if you need to unload some things that might help these guys at Christmas time, we can also be a place that we can do that as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Just one thing, because I wanted to ask Mr. Howard, because I know we had talked a little bit about this and as far as city staff being involved in this, is a community volunteer kind of opportunity. Are you working on that with Mr. Durham?
Yeah, we can work on that together.
Okay. And also, I think that day when we were talking about, and maybe the police chief's here tonight, talking about traffic assistance and some things like that, because you're gonna have to be using alternative parking.
Right, we can carry on two of those, so.
Okay.
Got it covered.
You got it good?
Chief says he's got it covered.
It is a volunteer opportunity. A lot of people have called me and asked me, oh, I have my grandsons and they're eight and 10, can they come? Yes, I want children, the children to be involved in every single part of it. My kids are coming. I hope that doesn't, that's, they're coming on their own will and I'm not paying them. So, it's not slave labor. But they are my kids and they're coming to it as well. And I'm gonna give everyone a job, you know? But really, I just wanted it to be items, I wanted to be the voice for the people in the community that I know that want to give things but don't know where, when, how. And also, wanna make sure that they're helping the people in their community, you know, get, 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 know, get a hand up, and that they're, the things that they donate, the time they donate is all going to the people around them, their neighbors and their friends, and, and the people that are in need in the same community that they live.
Good. Um, and I just want to clarify one other thing. Um, Mr. Howard, the, the, the things that we'll be collecting here, will we have some kind of facilities to be, or cans or boxes or something that we're going to be collecting these things in?
I believe so, right.
That's the first part of it. And then, is it for the staff? Are we focusing on the staff, or is this for the public to drop off here?
If anybody in the community wants to donate, I mean, that's...
They can do it here? Okay.
Just an opportunity for them to come out and donate.
Okay. So, Joe, is that something that we can put on the Facebook page and the we, website as well? Okay, good, good. We'll make people aware. All right, thanks a lot, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda under recognition is the Tishner Middle School student, Jade Dorman. Are you here, Jane? Jade, excuse me. Okay. Jade, I'm going to read this real quick from here, and then I'm going to bring it on over to you. Um, okay, first, I'll give a little bit of background here. Um, there's a, a calendar contest that's put out called the Why I Love America Calendar Contest. And so this is from Stacy Tapke, our Kenton County Attorney. Um, it says, "This calendar was created in 2001 after the September 11th ta, uh, attacks, in part because children can express through art what they cannot say in words. I'm so grateful that years later, schoolchildren are continuing to celebrate what they love about America, from our flag, our veterans, our first responders, our schools, our nature, our favorite pastimes, to our nation's history." So, this is a, um, uh, recognition here. City of Erlanger, Kentucky, um, hereby congratulates Jade Dorman on her outstanding artwork that was chosen to be displayed in the Kenton County's 2017 Why I Love America calendar, and recognizes her for her, her talent, love for her country, and for her representation of the Erlanger Elsmere Independent School District and Community. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby present this certificate on December 6, 2016.
Mr. Mayor?
Very nice.
Yes? I believe Jade was the only one that, that was recognized in the entire Erlanger Elsmere School District also.
That's right. Joe, would you be able to scan that, that we could? Jade, would that be okay if we scanned that? And then we can, uh, we can display that as well, like on our website? Okay. Can you get with them? Okay. All right, thank you so much. Congratulations, Jade.
You got a bunch of wiggly kids out there.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Jack just said, "We've got a bunch of wiggly kids out there." He's right.
Yeah, you should have done that first.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, this is a, a proclamation for the Lions Starter Team. Okay, yeah.
The wiggly ones.
There's like 60 of them.
There's like 60 of them.
Katie, more of the door!
You gotta understand, they're five, six-year-olds.
Do I?
They're only five and six-year-olds, so they're gonna be wiggly.
Oh, God love them. We should have taken them first.
Parents are worse, really.
I'm used to people yelling in the lobby, but, uh, not used to them being kids.
Bring them up front.
Go Lions!
All right, welcome, guys. Welcome, come on in.
They look like they're about five.
Oh, my God, they're so cute.
Do you guys play football?
Small army.
Oh, yeah.
They're so...
They're all big.
Oh, honey, you're...
These guys are coaches.
Keep it coming, keep it coming.
They do a tremendous job. They've got more patience ever since.
All right, good.
Reminds me of my grandson's basketball team.
They're perfect.
They're the wrong way.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Same way.
I don't know.
I can't...
Okay.
Commenting kid.
Guys, I've got a proclamation we're going to read here this evening. Okay, so this says, "Proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas the, the Erlanger Lions Starter Football Team, led by head coach Stretch Weaver and assistant coaches Antoine Curry, Dale Galsby, Chase Barger, Randy Campbell, Dara Webb, John McQuire, and Tony Morris, had an exceptional season in 2016. And whereas, the Erlanger Lions Starters Football Team defeated the Bengal Tigers, Campbell County, and the Boone County Eagles to win the 2016 Northern Kentucky Youth Football League Tiger Bowl Championship."
Woo-hoo!
And whereas, the Erlanger Lions Starters Football Team also won the 2016 Starter Bowl Championship by beating the Fort Mitchell Spartans and the South Kenton Lions. And whereas, the Erlanger Lions Football Starters have won both the Tiger Bowl Championship and the Starter Bowl Championship four years in a row.
Woo!
And whereas, the Erlanger Lions Starters Football Team has cheered, was cheered on by the Erlanger Lions Starters Cheerleading Squad, led by coaches Rachel Fields and Samantha Barger, Barger, excuse me. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim December 7th tomorrow, 2016, to be Erlanger Lions Starters Football Team Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this sixth day of December 2016. Congratulations, guys.
I know Jade is very active with the Lions. Jade, did you want to say something?
No, I'm just so proud of these guys, especially the coaches. I mean, they have the patience that these coaches have with this age group. As I'm saying, I've been doing it for 30 years, and I know exactly what these guys are going through. If I did it 30 years ago, to do it today is amazing, and you guys do a tremendous job with this group of kids, especially for the last four years, to win it four times in a row, that's unbelievable. So, you know, on behalf of Lions Club, I'd say we really appreciate everything you guys do, and hope you come into the game.
Did you guys want to say anything? Pictures, anyone want to get some pictures? Come up with one?
No, we don't need any more.
How about we all have everybody?
Yep.
Group picture.
Oh, yeah, no.
So long.
They're so cute. I went to my grandson's basketball game, he's five.
They're running the wrong way, and the coaches are talking to them.
It's hilarious to watch them.
Will you leave? Will you do the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know how they stood out there so long, because they were anxious when I came in. I came so far and walked through them.
A lot of paparazzi out there.
Yeah.
My grandson, I guess, in a little hawk haircut.
Yeah, he usually doesn't kind of what happened.
He looks like he's got a rub on top of his head.
Tony, I think he was bad in school.
Hang up, Phil! Hang up, Phil! Who the best? Who the best? Who the best? Who the best?
You getting me down here?
They're so cute. I want to hug all of them.
Oh, okay, that's awesome. All right.
Look at the little cheerleaders.
She's got the boobs.
She's got the...
He's got all the...
John Coop.
I went back to school.
I don't know why I can't do it every time.
Still five, actually, five, three and a half.
You don't fuck anymore?
Plus, I can't get up at early in the morning anymore.
I miss them, I really do.
Good, good. Good time, good stuff.
It couldn't be rarer than before.
You know, a good player, but you know, uh, five-three, yeah.
He's got his hands moved.
He's trying to get them all ready.
Yeah.
Well, even the ones, even the ones that I taught in high school, they graced me once off, like, I'm just happy to have kids.
Hey, he's the...
That's right.
Because when I read the notes that eluded from the...
Okay, thank you for your patience. Next up is the mayor's report. Uh, this last month is, has felt like an emotional roller coaster. Um, I'd like to first start by thanking the staff and our council for the kind words, the beautiful flowers, and wind chime that were sent to my father's funeral. I'm going to miss that man, and I'm counting on your continued support and prayers. The Phase 1 survey and report of the sidewalk, our sidewalk survey, is complete, and that's, um, Phase 1 was from I-75 to Dixie Highway. Um, I'll be sharing the report with you as soon as I receive it. The Phase 2 portion of the survey, which is from Dixie Highway to Stevenson Road, um, will be completed this week. So, they're, they're making progress. Um, I think it's good news. I think we're going to like what we're seeing there, and I'll be happy to report, or, uh, share that report with you shortly. Uh, Dave, and Dave Hahn and I had a nice meeting with Angelos Christen of United Dairy Farmers on Kenton Lands. Um, their primary function at that facility is cold storage and fuel storage. Uh, I heard, um, one overwhelming message from them, and I just wanted to share it with you. Eighty percent of their deliveries from that facility go to Ohio, being that UDF is based in Cincinnati. Unprompted, uh, Mr. Christen said, "If a toll gets instituted on the I-75 bridge, UDF will leave Kentucky and relocate to Ohio. Their margins are too tight to bear the additional cost." Um, this is one business of many, and, um, this council and our city need to stand united on the bridge toll issue. I know we have in the past, and I want to make sure we continue to in the future. Uh, we must not allow that bridge to be told, and, uh, it would have a devastating result on Erlanger and a lot of our communities around us. On another note here, um, I'd like to ask for some time at the December 20th Council Committee meeting to discuss the road ahead for Erlanger. I wanted to share a draft of my vision of the city, uh, but more importantly, I want to get the input of the staff and council on the direction we take in the upcoming years. I want to tell, I, I want you to tell me, "Hey, you forgot this," or, "Hey, you need to focus on something else." Uh, from, from there, I'll share that with the leadership team, and once we have all that input, I plan to present that at the city council meeting in January. During the campaign, I think, um, I heard Corinne mention it a couple times, and also I think, uh, Randy had mentioned it, um, that 12 coun, 12 council members makes us a better city because we have 12 people out there plugged into multiple facets of the community, representing the city and bringing back, bringing new ideas back to us here. Um, I thought, you know, she's right. I had unintentionally taken that benefit away from the city, uh, by, by making myself the representative on so many of those boards and committees. Um, I want to turn a new leaf. I want to have council members with me wherever I go and have council member representation out there, more so than the mayor. Uh, this behooves the city because, uh, if we're together, two people can hear the same thing said or presented and remember a completely different message. So, over the course of the next month, I'll be contacting every one of the council members to see what boards and commissions they would like to be a part of. There's a lot of them. I mean, just, just, this is a start, this, some of the starters here. The Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority, Planning and Development Services, Kenton County Planning Commission, the Northern Kentucky Health Department, Northern Kentucky Area Development District, the Chamber of Commerce, the Mayor's Group, the Home Builders Association. Uh, going back to the, the Mayor's Group, there, there are quite a few mayors that have council members that attend those meetings regularly with them. I would love that as well, um, Erlanger. Um, the Kentucky League of Cities, the Sanitation District Number 1, Municipal Government League of Northern Kentucky, Erlanger Elsmere Schools, the Rotary Club, and the Kenton County Alliance. There's more than 12 boards and committees. I would welcome multiple council members at each group, and, uh, would also like to see if any council members would be willing to meet with me as Dave Hahn and I are meeting with the businesses. I think it would be appropriate if we had council representation there as well. And I think actually, I find those meetings very fun because you, you, you get to actually see what's going on inside a lot of those buildings. Yeah, like Dave Hahn and I were just talking about before the meeting, you know, seeing what's going on inside Toyota Bishaku. I, I really don't know, honestly, what, what their production is inside there, or what, what's going on inside that facility. And it's fun to see. You always learn something. Is that right, Dave? Yeah, you're, yeah, you always learn something that you had no idea before. Um, on, then the final note here, um, I've spoken with Judge Executive Chris Nockelman. Um, he said he would be honored to be present for our December Council Committee meeting and the swearing-in of our city council. Um, we've also got a photographer lined up, so that would be a good chance for us to get council photos. So, we'll have to wear our Sunday best, Sunday best, okay? All right, that's all I have this evening. The next item on the agenda under Reports and Committees is Public Safety. Uh, Mrs. Sudkamp? This is Kyle. Police?
Yes, sir. Uh, a suspect was caught and arrested for using a skimmer device at Dollar General. I, I, that's the first I had heard of that, but apparently, there's been quite a few skimmers, and this was the first time they ever caught anyone.
Skimmer?
Yeah, like they're using in the, in the gas cards and stuff like that. I know me all that kind of stuff. Chief's in the house, we want to ask you any questions. Uh, Patrolman Stolz received a Member of the Year Award from the Kentucky Women's Law Enforcement Network. Uh, we've also interviewed 13 new hiring recruits. Four recruit candidates have become, began their testing. Uh, this is really neat. Patrol officers and sergeants donated $350 to EEUM to help feed people on Thanksgiving. Nice job, guys. Chief Wilson and Sergeant Sterling attended senior luncheon because they're old.
We've also got a photographer lined up, so that would be a good chance for us to get council photos, so we'll have to wear our Sunday best, okay? Alright, that's all I have this evening. The next item on the agenda under Reports and Committees is Public Safety. Mrs. Sudkamp, Mrs. Kyle, Police.
Yes, sir. A suspect was caught and arrested for using a skimmer device at Dollar General. I, that's the first I had heard of that, but apparently there's been quite a few skimmers, and this was the first time they ever caught anyone.
Skimmer?
Yeah, like they're using in the, in the gas cards and stuff like that. I know me all that kind of stuff. Chief's in the house, we want to ask you any questions. Patrolman Stolz received a Member of the Year Award from the Kentucky Women's Law Enforcement Network. We've also interviewed thirteen new hiring recruits. Four recruit candidates have become, began their testing. This is really neat. Patrol officers and sergeants donated $350 to EEUM to help feed people on Thanksgiving. Nice job, guys. Chief Wilson and Sergeant Sterling attended senior luncheon, because they're old. I'm sorry, sorry. Just kinda getting back at everybody. We have assigned an officer to the Northern Kentucky Strike Force. They met Amy Hess, who is the new FBI Special Agent in charge of Northern Kentucky, and Earlanger officers were involved in a joint homicide investigation with Boone County. And the Earlanger Elsmere FOP-55 attended a canned food drive and filled two pickup truck loads of food and donated it to EEUM. And Chief is in the house.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
I have something to add. I saw a lot of pictures with the officers that were gathering the canned goods. I was so proud of them when I saw that, you know? And so I congratulate you on that. And also Sergeant Sterling has a video out on community service. It shows you how the FedExman comes to your house, and he's asking for suggestions or whatever, to keep us all safe at this time of the year, because people actually follow those trucks. So just be aware, watch out for your neighbors, and if you see anything suspicious, call the Earlanger Police. Thanks, guys.
You have something to tell some kids?
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, I'm gonna shout out to the house, we have the Center 21st. People pick up food, people wrap pretzels, wrap kids. What time? Eight-thirty, it's just their middle school.
Eight-thirty till three, isn't it, usually? Yeah, it's an all-day affair.
We take them shopping, we take them to Boone, we give them lunch, we give them... Right, twenty-one.
If you've never been involved, you have not lived, I'm telling you. Now, just tell a very quick little story. The first little boy I had, the first year I went, we're walking down the aisle, and they usually bring a list, and he looked up at me and he said, "Lady, do you like toast?" And I'm thinking, "Lord, have mercy, I got a real winner here." And I said, "Well, yeah, honey, I like toast, do you like toast?" He said, "Yeah, my mommy loves toast, we don't have a toaster." Aww. Guess what I bought that kid? First thing in the cart, bought a toaster. Yeah, but these kids are so appreciative, and they're so excited, and, yeah. Get involved, guys, it's awesome.
It's incredible.
We received a donation again this year from ADM, uh, Flavors.
Oh.
So, I don't know, how much, um, that year. I think we purchased everything that was left in the way of the Kmart.
Yes, yes.
We made $15,000 a year.
Wow.
Yes. Unbeknownst to the families, we paid off all the Earlanger residents' layaways.
Wow.
And we were there when a couple of families arrived, there was not a dry eye in the house.
That's incredible.
It's, yeah, it's a beautiful thing.
Good. Thank you for sharing that.
That is a Wednesday, correct?
Yeah, it is, because our thing's the twentieth.
I guess every little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good amount of money.
Wonderful. Okay, then the next item under Public Safety, Fire EMS. Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, I'm gonna start off, and then Gary's gonna finish. It says Training for the Month. Duke Energy provided a free class for the department. They discussed the proper response and safety concerns when dealing with the different utilities. That was a four-hour class. They were also trained on vehicle extrication at the central station with wrecked vehicles provided by airport towing. Three vehicles were delivered, and each shift was given access to a car and allowed to train using the various techniques. And, all members of the department are certified as either an emergency medical technician, EMT-B, or a paramedic, EMT-P, as in paramedic. And this month was focused on assessing patients when responding to medical calls. Trench rescue, trench rescue course at the sanitation district facility. The class teaches members the proper procedures when dealing with trench rescues. Sounds like they went through a lot of training. And this other one, I couldn't highlight because I didn't understand it. Maybe the chief can explain it a little bit, but I'll read it. It's called Pulsara. Pulsara is an application for smartphones that connects paramedics on the street with emergency departments and doctors. With this technology, our members can use the app to notify hospitals of heart attacks, strokes, and other life-threatening emergencies. Emergency room doctors and cardiologists will be notified with an alert of vital information while our personnel are still on the scene. I'll let you talk when I get finished, okay? I want to get finished. AirTrak. AirTrak is a device to assist paramedics with intubating patients that are not breathing, and this was, this training was done for all three shifts on that also. And firefighter EMT Glenn Kilby has a birthday today.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
I want to share the member spotlight for this month. This month is Justin Brinkman, and Justin joined the Earlanger Fire EMS in ninety-seven, February ninety-seven, so almost twenty years, and just a few months. Started as an explorer when he was sixteen. At age eighteen, he started volunteering and was hired as a full-time firefighter/paramedic. He's worked his way up as lieutenant and now serves as the Blue Shift Captain. Justin serves on the Northern Kentucky Technical Rescue Team, instructs for the Northern Kentucky Fire Recruit Class, and is the founding member of the Honor Guard. And I find this particularly impressive. Justin's dad, stepdad, grandfather, stepbrother, and wife have all served for Earlanger Fire EMS. Justin's married to Eileen and has one son, Boston.
Excuse me.
The last thing that I wanted to mention was regarding the wildfires that were occurring. Three members of our department voluntarily deployed to assist with the wildfire in Southern Kentucky. It was, turned out that these fires were caused by the arsonists and have burned thirty-three thousand acres in sixty-nine counties so far. So I appreciate their service and volunteering outside of this area. Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, we've got the chief in the house.
To the Pulsara point, EMS coordinator will be presenting next month for council's small presentation of the app and what it actually does. She worked on the presentation. It's about time this app would help us get the information to the hospital.
Excuse me. Alright, thank you. Next, we've got Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore.
I guess Public Works Department is completing its final round for relief collection this week, and have been very busy with the final preparation of the snow removal. And the Depot Park Saturday night, I heard a lot of positive comments about how well they had that. It was really nice up there.
Looked great.
They had a dress up, so they've done a great job.
I want to congratulate Public Works, and specifically Rick Dodery, on the grant from the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for $3,000. They're gonna be going towards the frontline trucks this winter, and they're gonna be getting them some camera systems, so we can see what's going on and make sure things are safe for them out there. So I think that'll be a great thing. We do have a compliment from somebody that was actually paying their tax bill, and they wanted to thank Public Works for the great job they were doing in maintaining the city's parks, specifically Spring Valley and Flagship Park. Just to let everybody know that tomorrow for Pearl Harbor Day, Remembrance Day, the flag out front will not be lowered to half-staff. This is not, out of any disrespect, it's out of a mechanical issue. All the other flags will be lowered around the city, so. And Ed, I believe you're in the house here.
Alright, thank you. So is the, I know we'll probably get some phone calls on the flag thing. I mean, we can tell them it's a mechanical thing, but is, so is that being worked on? Or, okay. Okay, okay, great.
It's already buried most of the floor.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, really.
Okay, then next we've got Administration, Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill.
Mayor, just a couple, several general items here. We want to let everybody know that the general government offices will be closed on December twenty-third and twenty-sixth and January the second, so let them know, everybody know that. There'll be no collection on December the twenty-sixth, and there'll be no trash collection on January second, and trash collection will run on a one-day delay, so let you all know that as well. Also, I want to report that our property taxes that we have collected so far for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, $3,687,219, and we still have $441,418 outstanding for this year, for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Kathy's pointing at me here. We got the train display at the city coming up ASAP, it starts this Friday, and I believe the schedule is printed, is on our website, so, and so if you want to know that too. But I just want to make one more comment about the tree lighting at the Depot Park. Mayor, you were there, several members, staff members were there, and you said we had three hundred. Well, I think we had well over five hundred for that, for that event, so.
Yeah, I was being conservative, saying over three hundred.
It was very well, it was very well attended. They said, it started at seven o'clock, and they said people started coming in at five-fifteen, so, so that's a, that was a very successful event, and forward to what's gonna happen this year goes on for next year, so. And the Public Works, and Kim did a fantastic job in organizing, keeping everybody organized, along with the Police Department, Department of Public Works, so. Just want to pass that on, now I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy.
We're going to, this year, have a Christmas lights contest, and you are number one, decorate your house or business with Christmas lights. So not only can you be a resident, but your business too. You're to take a photo of your house or business with the Christmas lights, and then email your photo to joe.christopheld@cityofearlanger.com no later than December the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. You must include your name, your phone number, and your full address, and it must be an Earlanger resident or business. And Joe Christopher will place all submitted photos on the city's Facebook page. The voting period will be from December the fifteenth through the twenty-first. Whichever photo receives the most likes wins. Winners, one residential, one business, will be announced on December the twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. Winners will be recognized during a future City Council Meeting. So deadline is the fourteenth, Earlanger business or resident, and voting will be on the Facebook page from December the fifteenth through the twenty-first, and don't forget to put all your information, your name, address, and your phone number, so that they can get ahold of you, and then on the twenty-second, the winner will be announced. So this is new to the city this year. Good job, Joe.
Great, yeah.
And Sherri's here. I have nothing further.
Alright, great.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
On Saturday and Sunday, Bill, what's the time for the train? I know we thought it was...
I believe that's five to...
Five to nine.
Ten to three on Saturday.
Five to nine on Friday.
Five to nine on Friday.
Yeah.
Five to eight on Friday.
Five to eight, thank you.
I didn't get any of that, what the hell would you say?
Five to eight, five to eight on Friday, five to eight.
Okay, thank you.
And ten to five on Saturday.
Appreciate it, I got it.
Hey, anytime.
Some people don't have a computer, you know what I mean?
He's on first.
Funny.
Well, that's a fact.
On the Christmas lights, you know, I think I have to attribute the large crowd there to Joe Christofeld and to Kim Woking. I mean, I don't know how, I know we did a couple little different things this year, you know, putting it in, putting it in the paper, and Facebook, and, you know, somehow a lot more people got the word about it this year than normal, and it definitely had a positive response, so great job there. You know, and the other part of that is Kim's side of it, not necessarily expecting over four hundred people and being able to serve them with the hot chocolate, and they had cookies and donuts and all kinds of other things, and Santa Claus stayed there to see every child that wanted to see him. He said flat out when he came in that he was not gonna leave until every child, he saw every child, and it was fantastic. It really, really came off well, so, thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Blankenship, Mrs. Pitts.
Hey, the auditors are currently working on the draft of their comprehensive annual financial report. We expect to have the draft in our hands for final review this week. The auditors, however, will not be able to present this audit report until January meeting. Staff will begin working on the budget for fiscal year two, twenty eighteen, and will be distributing a budget counter to the mayor, council, department heads in the next week or two. In addition, the budget request worksheets will be sent to the department heads so they can begin preparation for their proposed budgets, and Steve's in the house.
Alright, thank you, Steve.
Alright, at least we're gonna say that.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is under Codes, Building, and Zoning.
Yeah, we have one thing. On November third, the Kenton County Plan Commission, KCPC, held a public hearing to discuss the city's application to change the zone on a city-owned property on Houston Road from Residential Three, R3, to Highway Commercial Two, HC2. The KCPC voted unanimously to approve our request. Therefore, the committee recommends that we have first reading of the ordinance approving the change under Legislation Section of the Agenda tonight. And Mr. Han is announced.
Do we have that on the agenda? Mm-hmm. Alright, thank you. Next item we've got under Progress and Revitalization, Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill.
No reports, sir.
No report, alright. Alright, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we, they are adopted as presented? Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next is the reports, reports of the representatives. Are there any reports from the representatives this evening? Mrs. Skidmore?
I've got Kenton County Alliance somewhere. The Heroin Impact Response Team, Report to the People, is Monday, December the twelfth, from six to eight, at the Saint Elizabeth Tech Center. It's at thirty-eight sixty-one Olympic Boulevard, and it used to be the Metro Center. Kenton County Fiscal Court, some, sorry, excuse me. Kenton County Fiscal Court has partnered with Fort Mitchell, Fort Wright, and Crestview Hills, December the eleventh, at twelve-thirty. They're going to have a door hanging event for Northern Kentucky Helpline. That's the new heroin helpline that you can call anytime, and they're supposed to be able to find you a place for treatment or to help you get unaddicted. The canvassing will include Crestview Hills. Anyone interested is to meet at the City of Crestview Administration Office on Sunday the eleventh of December at twelve-thirty. And that city building is kind of in with Crestview Hills Mall. It's kind of over on the far left, over, close to Bed Bath and Beyond, I guess. End of report.
Alright, thank you. Any other representatives? I will comment that PDS did not meet in this last month. We'll move on to the reports of the city operations. First up is their city engineer, Mr. Vioxx, do you have anything to report?
Only that the projects that we expected to get done this fall are getting accomplished, and thanks to Ed Milligan, he kept the contractors moving right along. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Gallin, do you have anything to report?
I have a couple things. First off, after it seems like several years and tremendous effort amongst the department heads, the rest of city staff, Mr. Wickman and myself, what about this high? The recodification has been dropped at the city building. So, we're gonna get an electronic copy of that as well, and Mr. Wickman and I will review that one final time, and hopefully it will be ready for a first reading in January. It's been a monumental project, and American Legal took a little longer than maybe they promised, but it's done, and I think it was a bigger project than they thought as well. So that'll be good to have that wrapped up. Secondly, and this is a little bit more just on the informational side, yesterday Adam Chaney was selected as the new Executive Director of SD One. As somebody who's dealt a lot with SD One, and we, as the city, had an issue with the lateral lines, Adam Chaney has always been very, very good to work with. He was the chair at SD One. He is a local guy from Boone County. I think it's a good move for SD One to have somebody who knows this community, who is a developer in this community, who has a banking and finance background, and I know that SD One sometimes has been everyone's favorite whipping boy, but I think they made a good choice with Adam Chaney, and I would hope that council gives him their blessing and the support, and if he doesn't do everything he's promised, maybe we could continue to kick him around a little bit, but I think that's a good move for this community. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Next we've got the City Council Attorney, Mr. Wickman, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, there's one thing I would like to identify. After every election, the Kentucky League of Cities presents two training seminars for mostly addressed to newly elected... for mostly addressed to newly elected members, but also as an update or refresher course for current members. There's two of them this year. One's on January the 11th, I'm sorry, it's on December the 16th. It's at the Florence Municipal Center. It's an evening session, 5:30 to 8:30, something like that. The second one is more intense. It's January 11th to January the 13th. It's in Lexington. Requires it either stay overnight or drive back and forth on the two. But in any event, I would recommend all the members of council to participate in those sessions if you can and I'd like to be involved with that if any member wants to do that, at the cost of the city, of course. That's all.
All right. Next item is the, our next up is the city administrator, Mr. Fields. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir. Just to follow up with Mr. Wickman said, we've reached out to the three new council members that will take office in January and have advised them of those trainings and afforded them up that opportunity to go. If in fact any setting member of council would like to go, please get ahold of our clerk, Sherri Hoffman, and she'll make those reservations for you to get down there. Also on the, well, the one in Florence is like next week or so, so if you want to do that, be sure to get ahold of her really quickly. Couple of things, had a meeting with the assessment team, the building assessment fire station location study. I do have a draft report that, have two copies of. David Hahn has one, I have one and we're going through it right now. We have given them some instructions about some different things that we had already seen that we thought needed to be addressed. Additional information that we, we wanted included in the report. They've been given a couple of weeks to bring that back to us. Hopefully, we will have that completed here in the month of December. So we'd like to shoot for a committee meeting in January to have that presentation, to have them here that night. So we'd like to get down on a January committee meeting if possible. Also, it's on the front window out there. So the Army Corps of Engineers have begun their, and I'm not really sure what this is called, but the Army Corps of Engineers are in charge of all the streams and wetlands in the state of Kentucky, well, probably throughout the country. Any developments going to go in, they have to do an evaluation of the site and come back with some recommendations about how we do stream mitigations and some things. Well, showcase property perspective developers have applied for that permit. We did get notice that the Army Corps of Engineers is starting that. If anybody out there listening or here tonight would like to make comment or any of those things, you see the notice on the front. It is several pages long, so it's not all hanging on the window. If you'd like to see the whole thing, please ask the receptionist out there or the city clerk and we'll let you look at it all if you'd like to make comments on anything that's going on. There are several tiny streams that run through that property and all of those are going to have to be addressed. I do believe there are three identifiable wetlands on that property that are going to have to be addressed, so. You know, everybody's talked about, you know, how long it's taken for that to be developed. That property's been set in their sale for 20 years. There's a lot of issues with that property and getting it developed. This was the first hurdle that this developer is going to have to get over before they can ever start, you know, turning any dirt whatsoever, so. It's going to be a long process, but if you'd like to look at that, it's here. I'm not real sure, I don't know that we can even get it on the website or we'd want to take up that much room, but we'll work with Joe and we'll try to get it on there if we can. Also at the January committee meeting, we talked about this before, we had went in with all the other cities to do a model franchise ordinance to kind of regulate small or many cell towers. We're very lucky so far, we have not had any provider request one to be placed in the city of Earl Langer as of yet, but all of our surrounding cities have, have received those requests. The closest one to us is right up in Dixie Highway in the city of Edgewood. So it is coming. High-traffic areas, schools in particular, business parks in particular where the data load for the cellular service is very high. So had some conversations with Mr. Gallin. We'd like to talk about this at a committee meeting in January also to see going forward what we want to do. Just creating the franchise, I know everybody looks at it and says, oh, it's a franchise, it's a tax, it's this, that. There's no fee. You guys can associate to it whatever you want, but telecommunications fee doesn't allow that, I don't believe, right now. There is a case, I believe, going on and going to be ruled on very shortly. However, it's not about that. It's about protecting our right of ways because these are all being put in our right of ways. And they're going to be put in right of ways probably, you know, maybe in neighborhoods. There are some of those. We want to make sure that we protect the quality of life in our neighborhoods and in our business districts and things, so. Looking at that and at least having our approval before they go in. PDS and the Planning Commission has instituted some procedure to give us some input before this, but we need to have something probably in place to protect our right of ways. Radio system. Had a meeting this past Friday with Kenton County, just to bring you up to date, we're progressing on the radio system. It is our intent after the first of the year to be able to come back with you sometime in the first couple of months, hopefully with a memorandum of understanding about what our part of this new radio system is going to be. This has now become a three-county system, so it's much larger than just Kenton County was before when we initially started these talks. So that's just an update on that, but I think it's progressing and I think it's, it's very good conversations and we're going to be able to come to something that I believe all of us can live with as far as we go forward with that. And congratulations, Steve Bodie. I know he's still here, he's got his head down back there. We won't say anything about the University of Cincinnati kind of stuff he wears all the time and tries to antagonize me, but as of December 1st, he completed his probationary period, is our finance director, and he is now our permanent finance director and we appreciate everything you've done and thank you. I know we probably should have waited till after we got the audit report back, but I do believe that the findings will be okay. On the second one, and I'm sure there are some residents here tonight to speak on this, I'm not, I'm not sure of, we've had a lot of comments and I counsel has heard some of this, so. As you all know, you know, the past year, we've had a resident that lives in the perimeter Hallam area that has been at probably every council meeting requesting us to do something about the intersection with perimeter and Stevenson and his suggestion was to block it off. So we get talking about how do we get input from the rest of the residents and looking at that and seeing that and, you know, we were getting the voice of one person who came and told us that he had knocked on, I can't remember how many doors, and everybody was in agreement with him and he was supposed to be showing up with some signatures on, on that, a petition with that. We've never seen that, but what we decided to do was try to reach out to the neighborhood to see exactly what their thoughts were. We were pretty sure that everybody wouldn't have the same feelings that, that this gentleman had. So Joe Christfield is here tonight. He can report on what that progress is so far. I just want to assure everybody because there was some miscommunication here evidently. There is no legislation that has been proposed. There is nothing that this council was ever going to act on about this. This was just an information gathering stage of what the neighborhood thought. You know, these things affect the people that live in that neighborhood and, and this council, mayor, the staff would never go forward with anything, a major change that, that affected the neighborhood without reaching out and this was the way that we reached out. We couldn't figure out any other way to do it except maybe go knock on doors. We just didn't have the staff to do that, so we apologize for that, but Joe's done a great job of that and that doesn't end until like December 19th, right?
Correct.
Okay, so floor's yours, Joe.
Thank you, Mark. As Mr. Fields has said, that I put a, basically I tried to keep this simple as possible. I put a one-question survey together and the question itself was, would you be in favor of permanently closing perimeter drive at Stevenson Road to vehicle traffic? So I included a map and some other information, including the deadline, which is December 19th. Give people a couple of weeks to, to gauge what they want to do and if they can get back with us. That survey went out on Friday, 182 residents. I mailed them myself, so I know they went out, took it to the post office, started getting some feedback on Saturday and up until now, it was five o'clock, I've had 19 responses. I'll just get to the one that's, one said he was either neither for nor against it because there's too many pros and cons, so. The other 18, there were yes that are for it and the other 10 are against it. Now I know that's just a little number for right now, but it kind of gives you an idea where we're at. I can tell you the eight yeses typically, whether it was a phone call, people stopping in, an email, they were just, you know, yeses, I'm in favor of that, just, or just a circle yes. I can tell you that the no's, we're a little bit more adamant, so. And see, that, that's exactly what, as Mr. Fields and I talked about, that's what government is. We're here for the residents and we want people to come and voice their opinion. It's, you're all street down there and in that area. So we sent them out to, like I said, 182 residents that we thought were mostly affected for the perimeter drive and Stevenson Road area and so I don't know if they want to speak now or if you want to wait till later. I don't think.
They're signed up, they can speak, they can speak then, because it's going to be.
I mean, I think that's what they're here for. I don't think they're here to give me their personal.
It's the very next thing on the, it's the very next thing on the agenda, so the floor will be yours in just one second.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just let everybody know, the area that we went to, we did perimeter all the way up to Fieldcrest and then Fieldcrest all the way back down to, to Stevenson Road. We didn't go any further on Hallam or Timberlake or anything up in there. We just, we cut it off right there at Fieldcrest, just to get kind of a sense of what that, you know, really initial neighborhood thought. And thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Okay, Renee, go ahead, sorry.
Did they actually stick, did they actually stick to the yes and no on their answers to you or did they say no because or yes because?
There were some that said no because. I had numerous of those. The yeses were primarily just yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, you've.
That's all.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's all.
Okay. You've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next we've got correspondence. Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, sir.
You know, I actually do have one. I'll try to go through it pretty quickly. Actually, I think I'll do more of an abbreviated version of this. I received a letter from Kevin Kappa of Hickory View Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio. Says, I'm taking this opportunity to share with you, the members of city council and the community of Earl Langer, Kentucky, a recent experience. On November 11th, 2016 Veterans Day, my family experienced a very humbling event in by one of your own. On this day, my wife, father, and myself had stopped at Chipotle to pick up lunch to take to my son and nephew. We had placed our order and when we went to pay, we discovered that my father, Mike Kappa's meal, had been paid for already. His meal had been paid by a police officer with the city of Earl Langer's force. The police officer had noticed that my father was a military veteran and former firefighter by his hat and jacket. The police officer didn't say a word. He graciously did this, did his good tribute to a retired servant of the community and our great nation and quietly went on his way. His acts of kindness, respect, and gratitude is what helps, helps build a strong community and nation. This officer demonstrated his awareness and gratitude of my father for his service while providing services of his, of his own for, to the community. What he didn't realize is that we were on our way to one of the Earl Langer firehouses to take lunch to my father's two grandsons who are firefighters with the city of Earl Langer, Joseph Kappa and Michael Kappa.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
In addition, Mike Kappa's services to the, in addition, Mike Kappa's services to the US Army and were visiting, and we were visiting them to thank them for their service to the community and nation. We wanted to share this story with you so all of you would be aware of the acts of kindness that are taking place within your community. If you can identify this police officer, please relay to him all of our gratitude, both for his special moment of recognition to my father and for his services to the community of Earl Langer. Signed, Kevin Kappa. I thought that was great, very nice.
That's awesome. It is awesome.
Do you know who it is?
I just found out. I was at the Kenton County.
Aww. I love you.
You're such a good boy.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
He's a nice guy.
I'll let you hang on to that. Thank you. Okay, so then the next item is the citizen comments. Okay, we've got two people signed up to speak. First one is Nanette Wilderbor. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people, or members, sorry. I'm Nanette Wilderbor, I live on Crestline and I am here to address the letter about the perimeter Stevenson issue. I couldn't believe I got this letter, first of all. Second of all, to close it. I don't understand why, what for. I, I, I just don't understand. First of all, I think it's going to be a public safety issue because if somebody is in need of an ambulance, they'll have to go all the way around. It's going to create more traffic coming through on Hallam, right where those stop signs are, right where that person doesn't want all the traffic going through. I don't understand the reasoning behind this. If they want to do something about it, I don't suggest closing, maybe take a look at it. There's a lot of wooded area there that can be cleaned up. I don't know whose property that is, that can be cleaned up to where you can see, you know, or put a mirror on the telephone pole, make it a three-way stop. I'm just making suggestions. I feel closing it completely is wrong. I travel that daily. My parents moved into Crestline Drive in 1968, have lived there ever since. I now live back there to take care of my mother. Like I said, I travel that to and from work every day and whenever anything else, but the public safety is my biggest issue. I have other neighbors here that live on Hallam, that also live on Crestline. We all are opposed to this. I can't believe only 19 people have responded. That's crazy out of 182. That's why I'm here, that's what I was worried about. I, I just don't know if you guys have, I know nothing's been, been, like you said, nothing's been done about it yet, but is there any other options or what is it that I can do to put a stop to it?
I think this is probably the best thing, you know, coming and so that we can hear your, your side of it is, is the best thing that you could, we could ask for. I will just say, I think the idea was that, this came up because of people running stop signs on, on Hall, on Hallam? Yeah, Hallam and Teakwood and.
Because that's a stop sign that was never there.
Right.
We are residents that have lived there for a very, very, 30, 40 years, if not longer. And then all of a sudden, this stop sign comes up out of nowhere.
Right.
I did the same thing at first because I didn't realize it was there. It was like, oh, shoot, there was a stop sign there. But I'm like, and then he, there's even police patrol on that, sitting on Teakwood, making sure, I mean, it, it's, I don't even agree with that stop sign. I don't understand why it's there. Teakwood is a little circle. There, you know, there's, it shouldn't even be there. Fieldcrest, I mean, I just don't understand. If it's concern about children, I get that part, but the children need to be taught not to play in the street. That's the way I was taught. I rode my bike all over this city when I was a child and I never had an issue. I know traffic is bigger and better now than it was when I was a child, but I just don't, I didn't, I, I want to know what to do. If he's out getting petitions and signatures for this, do I need to do the same? Because I will if I have to. I will go up and down perimeter, I will go up and down Crestline, Hallam, whatever it takes, because I just totally, so much disagree with this.
JD, go ahead.
Get the people over there to send in the survey saying they don't want it closed. And the more we get, then we'll make a decision on it. Until we get enough in here that they make a decision, have 182 people, we're not going to make a decision.
Okay. I'll go knock on doors.
I'd get them, get it out to them that, hey, get that, get that.
I already put it on Facebook and I know there are some people that, I went, I went to St. Henry, there's some of my classmates that still have their parents that live in this area and, you know, so I, I'm trying to get the word out.
Great, great.
I have a question for chief and public works. Since this is a, how long's this stop sign been there?
I'm not even sure.
Not that long?
Yeah. Couple years.
So, I know, in some places I see, I know on Nelson, we have one of those, or whatever, one of those signs that have like a reflector thing that says child at play. Do you think if that was put by, before, like, stop ahead?
Those are crosswalk signs.
It is only...
Stop sign ahead or something?
Or, you know, maybe something says child at play, stop, stop sign ahead or something, maybe it'll...
We don't put child at play signs out, because that's condoning child, child at play in the street.
Okay. Okay, well, is there anything that, to put that says stop ahead, you know, something that just stands out, or?
Oh, we all know it's there now.
Yeah, we do.
Trust me. As soon as we all seen the, the police officer sitting up on Teakwood, we're like, oh, the stop sign's here.
All right. This is, this is exactly what, what we needed to hear. And that's why we sent these out. We were hearing one voice for the past 12 months, that has been sitting in this council chambers at that mic for the last 12 months complaining about the same thing. And, and we had a pretty good feeling that that wasn't the whole neighborhoods, but we had no other, nobody else from the neighborhood coming up here saying anything. That's why we wanted to notify. That's why we wanted to get you here to do that.
Well, I'm glad you did, because I had no idea this was even going on.
So, please, there, there's nothing been drafted, like, like we said, there's no pending legislation to do any of these things. So, yes, do that with your neighbors, like, like Mr. Dunhoff had suggested, and, and get everybody up here, because council has to make decisions, informed decisions with, you know, for, for what the public wants or the good of the public. And, and hearing that from you is exactly what we needed, and that was part of the reason why sending out this survey, to notify everybody that this was going on.
Right.
That this was occurring. So, it was very good. So, thank you. I want to thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And please get, get more people here.
I will. I will go door to door, I will knock, even in the cold.
You go, girl.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I witnessed Nanette growing up, when she was a young girl. But I, I've lived in that neighborhood for 47 years. And, as she said, when the stop sign first went up, I'm like, wow, where'd that come from, you know? And we did have problems with going through it, but now, most people do stop. And I believe our police officers did patrol it, and I was told that there really wasn't that much of a speeding problem or stopping at the stop sign, so that's not a problem. And I know there's a little more traffic in the morning, and that's because we have a devastating intersection at Stevenson and Kimberly and Fieldcrest, because those roads don't line up. They're like the McAlpin Road used to be. And so, you've got this four-way stop, it's a nightmare. Plus, as you advance up that hill, you have a lot of people going to school in the morning. So, I do believe that people do use perimeter, Hallam, to cut over to Dixie Highway. I know I do. And the other reason I do is because our public works, when it snows, I know that road is clear. Stevenson belongs to the state, and it's not always clear. So, that's another reason why people come through there. But I really don't think it's that big of a problem to close down that road that's been there forever. That's called Fairwood Hills subdivision. And there's a little island there, and yes, it's hard to get out, but in the winter, it's not, because you can see the brush isn't there. But so many of us cut in that way to go home. And perimeter actually connects up to, I think it's, is it Lakewood Street on the one side, and then you've got Fieldcrest, Rainbow, what's the other one, Hayden? Those all run off of perimeter, so a lot of people come home that way. And if you shut that down, now they're going to have to go three or four extra blocks to get home, and he's going to have more traffic in front of his house. Plus, I agree with Nanette, it's a safety issue. Fire trucks, police officers, anybody coming in there, if they need to get the perimeter, you're going to slow them down. And I definitely, at my age, do not want them slowed down. Trust me. When I, when I have a heart attack or whatever, I want them there. My life depends on it. And that neighborhood is elderly. There are more elders like us in that neighborhood than there are young people. We do see some young ones moving in, which is really great, you know, I love it. But I think for the residents' sakes, I think Nanette, that's a great project for you to do. And if you can just tell those people, mail them in, because that's what I told her when she called me. I said, "I don't think people are going to mail them in." We have a lot of people that see it, eh, pitch, you know. So, if she can do that, that would be awesome.
But if they, if they've still got their letter, maybe they could just hand it to Nanette.
Yeah, they could. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, call me, Nanette, and I'll come over and get them. Yeah.
Or you can give them to me, and I'll bring them along.
I'll call them.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Or just if you've got it, maybe you can get Joe to give you a blank one, or several blank ones, in case they've lost theirs and threw it away.
I still have mine, but then I need to mail them.
Okay.
And so, I have mine in this place, so I can make copies, and I'll go to her door, and if I, I'll do it. And I need you to do this by when?
The 19th.
19th? Okay.
Thank you. All right, we've got another person signed up, Bill Steimer.
I'm just here, I read an article in the paper that St. East Hospital had sent correspondence around all the city governments in Northern Kentucky, encouraging them to go with them and trying to deny Christ Hospital a certificate of need. And I'm, I use St. East, don't get me wrong. It's a good hospital. But they got a monopoly, and that's what they're driving at. And we need to stop that. We need to let Christ or Tri-House or whoever that wants to come over here and build facilities for us, competition helps everyone. It helps the companies. I've been involved in small business all my life, and competition is good for everyone. And I just would suggest, 45-year resident of Erlanger, that if council does anything as far as a resolution or whatever, I fully would ask that they support Christ Hospital in their desire to get a certificate of need. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Steimer.
I second that.
I agree.
Yeah, I do, too. Even though there are new facilities.
Okay.
They need the competition.
I have not, I have not seen that, that letter necessarily. I don't know if anybody else has or not, but...
I haven't either.
It's in the paper, mayor.
In the paper? Oh, okay.
It's on with the pages?
Yeah, from what I understood, there was a, there was supposed to be a hearing at the state. I don't know exactly if that even happened, or if that was still yet to come, but I'll, I'll look into it and see if we can find out where that stands right now.
It's ongoing.
It is ongoing, oh, yeah. Tom, I should have known.
I forgot about him.
Oops.
Thank you.
I always get a sister.
All right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is our bids. Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Vyox, are there any bids?
No, sir.
This evening, okay. Then, old business, does anybody have any unfinished business to report? Mr. Dunhoff?
I just want to talk to everybody for a second. Tonight's my last council meeting after 22 years, and I just want to thank the citizens of Erlanger, the employees of Erlanger, the department heads, council, for allowing me to serve you for 22 years. I've lived here 58 years. I'm very proud of this city. I'm still going to be involved. But I just want to take the time to thank you and wish you all the best of luck, and again, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. JD.
You're a class of JD.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, I'd like to read what I, what I'm going to say, for what, thank you, John, it's been good to serve you, with you as well, so. But you know, recently, I read an article where the author was speaking of our future vision, which, when he read, "I will plant seeds that will grow in springtimes that I will not see. When I look at my tenure being on Erlanger City Council, I const, I am constantly reminded myself that it is not for my future that I made the decisions, but our children, future generations, who will have to live with the impact of the decisions I made. So, in respect to that, councils make many tough and hard decisions that don't always flow with the grain of popular sentiment. I believe in a strong police, fire force, who will be there for my family in times of crisis. As I grow older, there is comfort in knowing the Erlanger, city of Erlanger's EMS has the best equipment and staff to handle any medical needs. Our greatest visible asset is the public works department, who keeps our parks clean for enjoyment, who will go out throughout the day during snow emergencies, keeping our streets clean of snow and ice, who are our pothole specialists and road repair fixeruppers. A city that strives to let you know that when the phone rings, there's a person on the other end to answer that, answer your, or direct your call. Our administration department is top-notch in dealing with everyday issues, and we take, we as people take for granted. We have in place a park creation, a recreational department, had all of those opportunities to participate with friends and neighbors and activities throughout the city. That is, that is why I always look, look beyond the budget of the city. I look for opportunities where we can work together as partners in a community to make it the best we can, sharing its insights and hopes to shape us into a strong city of thriving neighborhoods, and yet not avoiding our past and what it took to make us great. That's my legacy. I want to leave with, leave this with a new council, to work cooperatively with one another, cooperatively with one another. Your weaknesses may be someone else's strength. Lean on it. Listen to veteran council members. Their professionalism and knowledge carries more weight than you know. Finally, I want to thank all the citizens of Erlanger for believing in me these past 21 years. My special thanks goes out to Paul Hahn, Ken Yaden, and Bill Shire, my mentors in my beginnings, who taught me so much about the importance of city government, and the leadership roles given me by mayors Mark Otto and Tom Rouse. With a special love and thanks goes out to my friend and coworker and all-around nice person, Kathy Cahill. That bond we shared on council will never go away, and I will cherish it for a lifetime. Thank you. That's a perfect segue into the new business portion of the meeting where we wanted to recognize these gentlemen. Mr. John Dunhoff, has been an Erlanger resident for approximately 53 years, graduated from Lloyd High School, attended Northern Kentucky University, served in the United States Marine Corps, served on city council for 22 years, in which he has served consecutive terms, and has served on various standing committees. For 10 years, coached for the Dixie Area Not Whole Baseball League. For 15 years, coached for the Lloyd High School Football Program. Since 1987 to present, coaches for the Erlanger Lions Youth Football. Served on the Northern Kentucky Football League Board for five years, and for 29 years has been a member of the Erlanger Lions Club. Mr. Dunhoff? Got a token of our appreciation. Mr. Bill Howard, has been an Erlanger resident most of his life, graduated from Lloyd High School in 1971. He is an active member of the Erlanger Methodist Church. He retired his, this year, from Tank. He served 20 years on city council, in which he has served consecutive terms, except for one term in which he had run for mayor and served on various standing committees. He's a member of the Erlanger Police Academy Alumni Association. He was part of the first graduating class of the Citizens Police Academy. He's one of the founders of the city's scholarship program, Erlanger's City Government Month, and the field, and the annual field trip with Tishner Middle School. Mr. Howard, we've got a token of our appreciation. He and his wife have chosen to raise their, their children here in Erlanger. Graduated from Dixie Heights High School. He's an active member of the St. Henry Church. He served two years on city council and the fire EMS Standing Committee, served as chairman of the facilities assessment and firehouse location study. Mr. Meyer, token of our appreciation. Under legislation, our first ordinance is the, regarding the personnel, personnel pay plan, second reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the pay wage plan for all Erlanger employees and non-elected city officers. By summary, the ordinance identifies that it has been recognized that the current pay plan, according to ordinance 2428, is no longer competitive with other pay plans of other cities around the area. Therefore, it amends ordinance 2428 to revise those, the provisions of that pay plan to make it more competitive with surrounding communities. There's attached to the ordinance, a schedule in which the changes are indicated by a, a line drawn through, the numbers that are being deleted, and the numbers that are being substituted are underlined. Second reading.
All right. We have a motion to adopt. Okay. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Absolutely.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next is an ordinance regarding the map amendment for Houston at Erlanger Road. This is a first reading.
This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Erlanger, county of Kenton, Kentucky, for an approximate, approximate 4.5 acres located on the southwest side of the intersection of Houston Road with Erlanger Road, changing the area from R3 and HC to HC2. By summary, this is the property currently owned by the city, and this has gone through KCPC. It has been recommended on October 26th, from a staff report of the October 26th and the map amendment as recommended by KCPC for the following basis. One, the proposed map amendment rezoning from R3 and HC to HC2 is consistent with the recommended land use map, direction 2030, your voice, your choice, which identifies the area for commercial uses. And number two, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of direction 33, 30, 30, your voice, your choice. This is a first reading.
All right, next, we'll ask that Mrs. Hoffman record that as the first reading. Next is a municipal order regarding the code enforcement board appointments.
It's municipal order number 12 dash 06 dash 16, dash 16, dash 01, a municipal order of the city council of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the appointment of Jim Vyox, John Dunhoff, Hubert Miller, Earl Franks, and Paul Gronfeld as members of the code enforcement board for the city of Erlanger. The terms of office are within this municipal order. They will all be January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2019. Actually, they're staggered, I apologize. The first two are through 2019, the second two are 2018, and the last one is through 2017. Yeah, that threw me off for a minute, 2017. And those are all staggered pursuant to the ordinance that was passed, requiring staggering.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this municipal order? It's read. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is a municipal order regarding the Board of Adjustments reappointments.
This is a municipal order of the city council of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Rui Newsome and Doug Conley as members of the Board of Adjustments for the City of Erlanger. Uh, Mr. Conley has moved from Erlanger to Elsmere. However, it is the wishes of the mayor to reappoint Doug Conley pursuant to KRS one-hundred two-one-seven. Any citizen member can be appointed to the board, and a citizen member is defined under KRS one-hundred point one-one-one as any member of a Board of Adjustment who is not an elected official or appointed official or employee of the city. So, it is my opinion that a resident of Elsmere would qualify for the Board of Adjustment.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? This municipal order is read. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second. Second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next one is the, um, municipal order regarding the Local Appeals Board reappointment.
This is municipal order number twelve dash oh-six dash sixteen dash oh-three, a municipal order of the city council of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of member Steve Conley to the Local Appeals Board for the City of Erlanger for the enforcement of the Kentucky Building Code. That term runs from January one, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is a municipal order regard, regarding the OKI Representative reappointment.
This is municipal order number twelve dash oh-six dash sixteen dash oh-four, a municipal order of the city council of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of council member Tom Cahill, Jr., as a representative of the city to the Ohio Kentucky Indiana OKI Regional Council of Governments. That appointment is for one year, beginning January one and ending December thirty-one of twenty seventeen.
Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a municipal order regarding the Kenton County Planning Commission Representative reappointment.
Municipal order of the city council of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Diane Brown as a member of Kenton County Planning Commission. That term of office is for January one, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Do I entertain a motion? Look this way for a change, sorry about that. Motion by Mrs. Pitts, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, do I entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Skidmore, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.